The time is now 7:03 and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, September 24, 2018. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Mr. Razak?
Here.
Mr. Carubas?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Mr. Rising, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I think we have several boards salutes. And Ms. Demming, can you lead us in the first one?
Matia Valley Newspaper named finalist for Pacemaker Award. The board salutes Adam Page and the Matia Valley Newspaper staff of the Stampede for being named a Pacemaker finalist by the National Scholastic Press Association. The Pacemaker recognizes the best of the high school journalism from around the country. Matia Valley is one of 61 schools from across the United States and only one of two in Illinois to be named as a finalist. Pacemaker finalists will be recognized and the Pacemaker winners will be announced at the Fall National High School Journalism Convention in November in Chicago. Congratulations, Adam, and the Stampede staff.
Thank you. Ms. Peel?
Okay. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced 46 students from District 204 who have been identified as semifinalists in the 64th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. There are seven students from Matia Valley, 28 students from Niqua Valley, and 11 students from Wobonzie Valley. Approximately 16,000 semifinalists throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for national merit scholarships worth more than $32 million. That will be offered next spring. Congratulations to all and good luck as the competition moves forward.
Thank you. And I think Ms. Donahue.
District 204 Chief Technology Officer Adam Smets recently earned the Certified Education Technology Leader designation by passing a rigorous certification exam. This certification awarded by the Consortium for School Networking signifies that Adam has mastered the knowledge and skills needed to bring 21st century technology to our K-12 school system. To become certified, the candidate must demonstrate experience in the education technology field and pass a comprehensive two-part examination. Once the certification is earned, the ed tech professional must complete 60 hours of professional development activities every three years to maintain the designation. Congratulations, Adam, on this stellar achievement.
Great. Thank you. It's now time for our student representative report. Today it's from Wobonzie Valley High School and Sam Jordan. Hey, Sam.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Sam Jordan. In athletics, Wobonzie's varsity boys golf team is undefeated in conference and the JV team has three wins and one loss. They compete in conference tomorrow at Clary and Golf Club. Wobonzie's varsity football team is undefeated with a record of 5-0 and will be playing Niqua again this Friday at Niqua Valley. Girls volleyball recently swept their Southside rival Niqua in two games. Their current record is 12-5. In academics, Wobonzie is celebrating three perfect ACT scores from last spring's testing and noting that this is the highest number we've had in recent years. Eleven Wobonzie Valley students were announced as national merit semifinalists. Last May, Wobonzie administered a record number of AP tests to a total of 1,460 exams. Of those, we had 767 students testing. Eighty-eight percent of our students scored a III or greater, which is equivalent to 675 students. Something that, as a Warrior community, we are especially proud of this year is that we've installed several student achievement recognitions to help build appreciation for all the wonderful things that our students do. Several of our departments are now recognizing Students of the Month and our building will host Warrior Values Breakfast each semester to honor these students. In upcoming events, Homecoming will soon be here. Wobonzie's color run is September 30 at 10:00 a.m. to start off Homecoming week on a fun note. Student Council has been hard at work since the school year started to put together the decorations that go with our Homecoming theme, the Roaring Twenties. Homecoming will be held on October 6 at 7:00 p.m. Our Homecoming football game is on Friday, October 5 at 7:30 p.m. at Wobonzie Valley against Prairie Ridge. We will be crowning Homecoming King and Queen before the football game. The Know Your Village event is also coming up. On Saturday, September 29, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., Wobonzie will be hosting the Know Your Village Cultural Fair. We hope that this will expose our community to the diversity of culture in District 204 through sharing information, food, music, faith, language, art, fashion, performance, and more. Also, the Veterans Day Assembly is coming up. On top of all the wonderful celebrations and achievements at Wobonzie, we, the administration and myself, would like to extend an invitation to the Board for our annual Veterans Day Assembly that will be held on November 9 at 9:00 a.m. Formal invites will soon be sent and we hope you'll join us. And, as always, once a Warrior, always a Warrior.
Thanks, Sam.
Good job.
It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, and it doesn't appear we'd have anyone to do that, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask you to respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups and, as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. And our first speaker, come to the front, please, Mary Brill. Welcome, Mary.
Hello. I was at the first Board meeting of this school year and I addressed some of my concerns regarding the school fee schedule. At that meeting, the Board had asked someone to follow up with me. The only answers or relief that I was given was to either put the fees on my credit card or to get into a payment plan. So that afforded me some time to do some more research in this fee schedule that the district has in place. According to the Illinois Constitution, Article 10, Education, Section 1, goes free schools. It reads, "The state shall provide for an efficient system of high-quality public educational institutions and services. Education and public schools through the secondary level shall be free. There may be such other free education as the General Assembly provides by law. The state has the primary responsibility for financing the system of public education." The Illinois Board of Education, Section 105 ILCS 5/27-23 and 27-24.2 of the school code requires each school district which maintains grades 9 through 12 to offer driver education course which is defined as both classroom and behind the wheel. It goes on to say that the district may charge a reasonable fee not to exceed $250 unless the district has received an approved waiver from the State Board of Education. If a student is unable to pay for the course, the fee shall be waived per 105 ILCS 5/27-23. I was not able to locate the approval from the State Board allowing this district to charge $350 for drivers ed. According to the ILCS 5/10-20/3 and 34-21.6 under Illinois law, school districts are required to waive charges for textbooks and other fees for children whose families are unable to afford them, including children eligible for free lunch and breakfast programs and for any other extenuating circumstances. According to the class action lawsuit filed by ACLU by the Chief Counsel Mark Rosenberg in the state of California, they determined that even income-based fee waivers or refusing to let kids participate in activities unless they pay a fee is discriminatory. And now, it is illegal in the state of California. I am raising these concerns in this district to make you all aware that what is a drop in the bucket for one family is a financial burden for others. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second speaker is Sally Glavin.
Welcome.
Empty chair.
Yep. We got an empty chair.
Weird over there.
No, it is. I have a different perspective now.
Oh, dear. I reviewed the September C count reports for middle and high schools. I only tabulated the number of core classes, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, that are over 32, since 32 is the maximum class size mentioned in the teacher contract. Make no mistake, though, there are plenty of classes between 29 and 32, all of which are very large and detrimental to the educational experience of the students. Matea has 27 core classes over 32. That breaks down to 14 Social Studies, seven English, and six Math. There are two English classes that have 34 students, two Social Studies classes also at 34, and the other 23 are all at 33 students. Wobonzie has 25 core classes over 32, 11 Social Studies, seven English, six Math, and one Science. Of these, there are four Social Studies classes at 34, one Math class at 34, and the other 21 classes all clock in at 33 students. Niqua fares the best with only six classes over 32, one Social Studies, three Math, and two English. All of these sections have 33 students in them. If the district is not going to hire more teachers, I don't think it is unreasonable to expect that a more equitable distribution of our staff be made among the three high schools so that one school does not appear to have more resources, i.e. teachers, allocated to their students over the other schools. My preference, though, is to definitely hire more staff so that oversized classes are the exception rather than the norm at all three high schools. Now, on to the middle schools. Fisher has two core classes with 34 students, Still has three core classes with 34 students. Hill has four core classes between 33 and 36 students. Crown has seven core classes between 33 and 37. Granger has 10 core classes between 33 and 35. Gregory has 13 core classes, also between 33 and 37. And Scullin has 21 core classes that range between 33 and 39. There is one Math class at 39 and two English classes at 38 and two Science classes at 38 also. The other 16 classes all have either 33 or 34 students in them. You have to agree that the students in the middle school Math class of 39 are probably not receiving the same education as those who are in a class of 28. With class sizes such as these, it is clear that we have a very real need at every single one of our middle schools now. Engage 204 clearly indicated that class size is a priority for the community. The Board has indicated that lowering class size will be a long-term plan, yet clearly there are some classes that need to be addressed in the short term. One way to do this is to stop participating in the STEM school and bring those teachers' and dollars back to the 204 community. It is egregious that we continue to allocate teachers and dollars out of our district for a majority non-204 school when our own students can barely fit into their assigned classroom. The addition of even five teachers at this level would do wonders for the large class sizes that many are experiencing, which would be very doable if the STEM 204 teachers came back to 204 schools and the dollars spent for the STEM school went to hiring a few teachers here. Please act in accordance with the desire of the community and in the best interest of the students and begin attacking the problem of large class sizes now and not wait for some long-term plan to be enacted at some future date that has yet to arrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you, Lori, for all of your dedication to the district over the last several years. You're going to be missed.
Okay. We are now moving to the consent agenda and superintendent report. We always begin with the superintendent report.
I will be very quick. I just have one thing I want to discuss and that's just to take the opportunity to congratulate our school board. Indian Prairie is only one of six school districts in DuPage County to receive the 2018 School Board Governance Award. And individually, we have IASB Master School Board members around the table and Lori and Susan, you join the number of the other board members as leadership fellows as well. So your achievement model's lifelong learning that we want to see in our students and our staff. So you're setting a high bar for the next board member, whoever's going to sit over there or over there. Board members will receive, will see the Board Governance Award and also each of you will receive your individual School Board awards at the IASA DuPage Division Dinner, which is on October 2. So congratulations. And then I think next is we'd like to recognize Lori Price, our former board member. I think he's going to make you come up there.
I do this reluctantly, but come up here. And the reluctance is that you're leaving us. This is bittersweet for all of us. Before I do this proclamation, two words come to mind, and that is community steward and mentor. When we read this proclamation, people will realize the amount of time, the amount of effort, the amount of dedication, the countless hours that you spent not only on the Board but throughout the district, not to help yourself but to help the students of our community. And that's clearly appreciated by myself and my fellow board members. And you've been a mentor to all of us. Gave us advice, gave us a little finger every once in a while. Can't say that one. Encouragement, sometimes when we needed to be yelled at, you gave us a little bit of that too, but it was all within the spirit of working within the best of the district. And so we read the proclamation, and that is...
I can read along?
No, yeah, you can read along or hold it. Whereas Lori Price was elected to the Indian Prairie School District 204 Board of Education in April 2011, as an active volunteer in the community, she has dedicated extensive time and energy to organizations both within and outside of the school district. And whereas Ms. Price served as President of the Indian Prairie Special Needs PTA for four years and was also Member of the Indian Prairie Parents Council from 2007, 2011, where she served one term as an at-large Member of the Executive Board, as well as serving on the Legislative Committee and also served on District 204 Special Olympics Advisory Board. And whereas Ms. Price has been an active member at Owen Elementary, Still Middle School, and Matia Valley High School parent organizations, serving in various capacities, including special needs liaison and legislative chairperson. In addition to volunteering countless hours in the classroom, and whereas during her tenure on the Board of Education, Ms. Price served as the Board's Secretary, Vice President, and later went on to lead the school board as President and oversaw the search process for the current Superintendent. And whereas Ms. Price's leadership led to being one of 18 school districts throughout the state to receive the Illinois Association of School Boards 2016 School Board Governance Recognition Designation, which acknowledges school boards that have engaged in activities and modeled behaviors that led to excellence in local school governance in support of quality public education. Now therefore be it proclaimed that District 204 Board of Education, Administration, and Community honor Lori Price for her outstanding service. We thank her for her willingness to actively participate as an elective official and volunteer leader, which has been a great value to all the stakeholders in this district. She believes that it is vital for parents to get involved and she is a role model for volunteerism in the community. We wish her all the best, and we do, as she steps down from the Board, but she leaves behind a legacy of caring and commitment to our school district. And on behalf of the Board... Well, I'll keep that up there and I'll hold this for you, too. Thank you. Three minutes, Price.
Wow. Thank you. You know, after the last meeting, I gave my announcement and I thought I'd have Mondays off, but I found myself preparing for this meeting and I saw myself on the agenda. I just, I have a few thank yous and a few comments. Obviously, thank you to the Board. You guys have been thoughtful, respectful, prepared, funny, sometimes even aggravating. But I have not been in the company of better people. This is truly a high-functioning Board, as evidenced by the Governance Award yet again. I think that makes three times, right? So that I will miss. You guys are professionals, all of you. You care about students and just keep that, obviously, in your minds, you know, with whatever decisions you have to make. To Cabinet and Administration, all of you have helped me become a better Board Member. You've answered my questions. You know, nobody knows how to be a Board Member until they're actually in the job. There's no college course you can take. So Jay, thank you for all your finance information. You know, Brad with HR, I mean Doug with HR. I still get you two mixed up. I mean, just everybody. Janet, too, for letting me know that sometimes ideas just need to stay unsaid. She knows what I'm talking about. The teachers, I have to thank the teachers, not because I was a Board Member, just for what you do. I mean, that is incredible to see you in action every day and what you do for children is to be commended. So Paul, please pass that along to your teachers. Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you very much. You know, when we hired you, that was a lot of pressure on a new president and you were just, you were fantastic. You stepped into that role seamlessly. And you've done a great job and you've brought this district to an even higher level. So we appreciate that. I appreciate that and I know the Board does. And I just, I have to say, the cards and the texts and some messages of support that I've gotten has just been overwhelming. So that's, I just really appreciate that. And in fact, I had, after the announcement, I had a visitor at my workplace and they said, Lori, you have a visitor. And I said, oh, who is it? They said, well, she says she's your former Superintendent. Well, that could be now a couple people, but it actually was Kathy Burkett and she came to visit and I was very touched by that. And last but not least, my husband, David, and my family.
Look up Dave.
I've missed anniversaries, my wedding anniversaries, because of our conference, the timing of our state conference, and would have missed it this year again, too. So I'm going to stay home and celebrate our 27th anniversary.
If you miss him, they don't count.
No. So I'll be able to be with him on our anniversary. You know, obviously my... Can I get a water? Thank you. Obviously, my kids, you know, I've missed some of their events and things like that. But they've been really, again, my family's been so supportive. Even my husband was surprised at my decision to step down. So I wouldn't have been on the Board without their support and I wouldn't be here without their support. It's been a wild ride. I've loved being a Board Member, serving as President, Secretary. You know, we've had some highs and lows. We, you know, obviously hired a Superintendent. We tweaked boundaries, engaged 204 forums. All of those things were very, again, thoughtfully done and with a tremendous Board. And it's just, you know, tweaking boundaries is never easy, but when we can think about it and have rational discussions, it's a much easier task to do. I've loved being on this Board. It's one of the best in the state. Had some, again, highs and lows, but I was, I'm so incredibly honored to have been able to participate in the graduations. That is such an emotional and special time, for me, anyway, as a Board Member, and I know some of you felt the same way. So I will miss that. But I did have the honor and privilege of giving both of my children their diplomas. And that's something I'll never forget. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this school district and community and I thank the community for your many years of support and for this honor this evening. I am truly blessed to have had the opportunity to serve in such a great district with so many great educators. And again, I just encourage you to keep the students in mind when you are making your decisions. I know you will. Thank you.
Good job, Lori. Okay, in my absence, Mr. Carubas mentioned the FOIA reports. That's on our agenda. Those are present if people need to look at them. The FOIA is Freedom of Information Act. Oftentimes, community members ask us for information. We post that on our Board meeting agenda before every Board meeting. And now I need approval for consent agenda items E through J. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items E through J as presented.
Second? I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a discussion item on our annual recruitment and hiring report. Mr. Akarius?
Good evening, Board of Education members. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening on our hiring and recruitment efforts. I'm Dougie Akarius, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and with me this evening is Carrie Beth Harry. She is a vital member of our Human Resources Department and a go-to person for administrators across the district, especially during hiring time, as she's usually flooded with both questions and requests and a lot of tasks to accomplish at that time. And she's going to kick off our presentation.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. We're excited to present to you our annual hiring report. The most important thing that we do is hire the right people and we worked very hard this past year to improve our recruitment efforts, support our administrators throughout the hiring process, and provide a welcoming and supportive onboarding experience for our new hires. This summer is, the summer is our busiest time as we process exits and their replacements, transfer and rehire staff, and ensure that our teachers are in place on the first day. This slide represents a grouping of our hiring report classifications. Please understand that it's a snapshot in time. It's based on... across the district, especially during hiring time, as she's usually flooded with both questions and requests and a lot of tasks to accomplish at that time. And she's going to kick off our presentation.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. We're excited to present to you our annual hiring report. The most important thing that we do is hire the right people. And we've worked very hard this past year to improve our recruitment efforts, support our administrators throughout the hiring process, and provide a welcoming and supportive onboarding experience for our new hires. This summer is, the summer is our busiest time as we process exits and their replacements, transfer and rehire staff, and ensure that our teachers are in place on the first day. This slide represents a grouping of our hiring report classifications. Please understand that it's a snapshot in time. It's based on September 1st data. Our administration consists of 2.83% of our staff, teachers 66.46%. Classified support, including teaching assistants and secretaries, is 25%. And non-bargaining staff is 5.7%, which includes OTs and PTs, our registered nurses, our technology, business, and HR staff. While we're up a total of 31.8 FTE from the beginning of last year, when we presented you last fall, we have remained within budget. We added 24.2 FTE throughout the 17-18 school year, so added just 7.6 FTE over the summer. This is a direct result of increasing numbers in special education and ELL. We have targeted mental health support. Our new hire class was slightly more than last year. Some things to note on this slide. As compared to last year, we hired more male teachers. Our teachers were more experienced and had more education than in the past. We hired almost twice as many teachers with seven to nine years of experience as we did last year. These teachers are scattered throughout our salary schedule and took positions that were hard to fill, content area-specific, and our K-5 classrooms. This makes sense to us because of the dramatic decrease of teachers entering the profession out of college and university. And we also gave flexibility to our administrators to hire the best candidates for their need. This year, 51% were hired in July and August. This is higher than the last two years. Hard-to-fill, last-minute enrollment, and late resignations contribute to this. We would like to be able to hire earlier, and we'll address that in our recruitment efforts.
All right, next, we're gonna focus on teacher supply. These are the positions that are increasingly hard to fill: special education teachers, bilingual teachers, as well as ELL teachers, psychologists, certified school nurses, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, and then many of our high school-specific subjects. We find challenges when we're trying to recruit staff members. They continue to be hard to fill. Last year, the state of Illinois could not fill over 1,400 teaching positions, and 48% were special education and bilingual or ELL teaching positions. It was noted that as the number of students that have English as a second language has risen from 4.4% in 2014 to 10.1% in 2017, the number of students that have Spanish as a primary language has actually decreased by 6.5% from 2013 to 17, meaning that the number of primary languages other than English has increased. It has been a struggle for us to find bilingual teachers for other languages besides Spanish, most notably in Telugu. This just shows some of the teacher supply trends. You'll see nationally, from 2008 to 2016, teacher candidates enrolling and completing teacher prep programs decreased by 23%. And what's happening in Illinois is even more concerning. We see that from 2010 to 2016, teacher candidates enrolling and completing teacher programs decreased by 53%.
So the teacher supply line shrunk in half?
Yes, in Illinois. This is the most recent Title II data on teacher preparation enrollment in Illinois. You'll see this shows exactly what I just spoke about. In 2010-11, you'll notice there were 32,433 people enrolled in teacher education programs at some level. They could be freshmen, sophomore, junior, senior, masters of teaching, anybody who was enrolled in a teaching program. And during that year, we had 10,436 that completed to be able to enter the workforce. In 2015-16, you'll notice that number was 12,763. That's actually a decrease of 61%. But the number that completed was a decrease of 53% that you'll see. 4,927 is what completed in 2015-16. And we have not heard of a turnaround since then. That is the most recent data you can find on the Title II report. Also, there is about 130,000 teaching positions in the state of Illinois. There's usually a turnover rate of about more than 15,000 of those each year on a turnover rate. If you compare to what's coming out of college with 4,900 completing, but knowing there's gonna be a turnover of 15,000, you can tell why there's so many shortages in teaching positions in the state of Illinois. I put this slide up last year just diversity can be defined as the sum of the ways that people are both alike and different. The dimensions of diversity include race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, language, culture, religion, mental and physical ability, class, and immigration status. For our purposes, we'll be focusing our next few slides on the diversity or lack thereof regarding race and ethnicity in our workforce. As stated, we always want to hire the best, most highly qualified candidates while at the same time trying to increase the diversity of our workforce. Sorry. This past year, 8.5% of our new licensed hires were persons of color. The overall percentage of licensed staff actually increased to 11%. We had 33.6% of our classified and non-bargaining hires were persons of color. Last year was at 23%. Last year, we did not have any administrative hires that were persons of color. And this year, we had one-third of them, two of the six, were persons of color.
Remind them what non-bargaining is?
Yeah. Non-bargaining is, once again, what Carrie already mentioned earlier in the slide, that included OTs, PTs, RNs, people in the HR department and tech departments, can be in the business departments. Those are all, make up our non-bargaining staff. We are concerned about the decrease in the number of students attending universities teach, as well as the low number of teaching candidates of color at many universities. Finding good teachers is becoming an increasingly competitive market. And to be honest, districts are not being nice to each other when it comes down to crunch time. This is especially true when trying to attract teachers of color. While I'm extremely disappointed to see that only 8.5% of our new teacher hires were teachers of color, I was glad to see that our overall percentage increased even slightly because that means that we gained more than we lost during that same time. I just wanted to break down those numbers that I presented earlier. Back in 2010-11, there were 32,433 students enrolled at any level. It does not tell us what their certification was going to be. Were they in for elementary school teaching? Were they special ed? Were they high school? None of that information is provided to us. But they do give us demographic information. And this was the breakdown of students who were enrolled to be teachers back in 2010-11. That same information for 2015-16, which is the most recent data, where it was 12,763, you also see the breakdown by demographic area. This is, once again, not telling us what area they're gonna be licensed for. And this is only people enrolled, not people necessarily completing the programs at any stage that they're enrolled. Extremely concerning is that while the percentage of students of color has increased in Illinois from 46% to 52% over the last two years, I'm sorry, over the last 10 years, the percentage of teachers of color has slightly decreased in Illinois from 15% to 14% during that same time period. You'll notice that if you just compare the numbers across here. When I look at Black or African-American, you see 2,204 in 2010-11, somewhere in the program to 766 in the most recent data.
So all of the school districts, 800 of them, are competing for these teachers. These are the enrolled, not the completed.
Correct. This is just enrolled.
But for example, if a district was trying to hire a Black or African-American teacher, we have 800-plus school districts in Illinois, and they're competing for a pool of 766, assuming all of them finish.
Well, and this is a different level. Some of these could be freshmen or sophomores. Right. It's anywhere enrolled. So the actual completed numbers, they don't give us the demographic breakdown on that. That's why I think there's a lot of people trying to target their recruitment efforts or try to steal from other school districts or go out of state. I think this is even more important why, you know, we've really got to consider what we're looking at out of state. Because if, you know, we're not finding all the candidates we're looking for in-state, we're gonna have to be looking somewhere for those candidates.
But it's still a national trend, right? I mean, it's not Illinois.
This is Illinois, there's a national trend that, well, overall, that teacher programs are down with people enrolling and completing down 23%. We're down 53% in Illinois.
But I think that, you touched on something, because I think that's the key, too. And you can't assume these 12,600 or 763 are Illinois kids, right? So Illinois, right now, has the highest number of high school students they've ever had leaving the state to go get educated. So I think the next logical step is, we're gonna have to try to get those kids that leave Illinois to come back if they are in education. So I think that's.
I think that's definitely one of the things to do. We're gonna talk a little bit more about, you know, some things that we think we need to do. Last year, there was a question just about comparing, what does it look like, our student demographics compared to our teacher demographics? So I just wanted to make sure that this slide was visible to you, so you had the information. You can kind of see what percent of teachers we have with what our percentage of student that comparison is. Next, we'll talk a little bit about recruitment. Last year, we increased our recruitment fairs attended. We attended Aurora University, North Central College, Northern Illinois University, Illinois State University, the UIC Consortium, which included UIC, Loyola, and DePaul. We had the University of Illinois at Champaign and the University of Iowa. So we did a lot more visits last year. We did see some good turnouts at some of the buildings, some disappointing turnouts at the same time. Also, collaborated with parents to explore some HBCU visits for the 2018-19 school year. We advertised in Diversity in Ed magazine. Have a copy of that magazine if anybody does want to see it. And we participated in our first virtual job fair, which was Diversity in Education Virtual Fair. That was a national job fair. I would say that we were probably a little bit disappointed in the turnout. We heard not to set our expectations too high. It was definitely, you know, we had, there were people from all over the country, and they wanted to stay where they were at. We had people on there from Florida who were hoping we were gonna be in Florida, but we were not in Florida. And so I think we maybe spoke to maybe six people throughout the entire day. I did the whole morning, and Carrie Beth did the whole afternoon. And we waited on there. It was interesting. It was a cool experience how they set it up. It made us think about what we could do ourselves that maybe would be a little more fruitful.
I support that. I mean, trying to think creatively, it's not all gonna be golden, right? You're gonna stub your toe and learn and grow from that, so great. Keep it up.
Recruitment strategies, how we're recruiting, I think we have to think both short-term and long-term. I do think going out to these college and university outreaches, either going there for meetings, going and helping up with, helping them work on resumes, going there to do presentations, I think those can be kind of short-term and long-term, because you're kind of building relationships with universities. I do think when we looked at diverse candidates, we saw a lot more diversity at the UIC Consortium as well as at Aurora University. I do think that's why we have to also make an effort to go to HBCU. I've identified two of the largest, from what I can tell, educator recruitment fairs. One was Jackson State University, and another one was Virginia State University. With Virginia State University, right now, I'm trying to see if I compare that with, a two-hour drive from there is Howard University. They don't do a fair, but they do interviews that you can set up there. And I'm trying to see if I compare those both in the same week to make what I think could be more of an effective trip out of that. So that's some of the things we're looking at with those visits. Always trying to get student teachers in here, because I think that's a short-term thing that can turn into a long-term recruitment for us.
Doug, quick, the UIC Consortium and Aurora University, did we see, how were the numbers that we brought in this year as far as new teachers that were just out of school? Were we able to bring in teachers from those locations? You said you felt those were the most beneficial, but did we see?
We made good contacts. I would say some of the challenges, which you'll see on my next slide, are timing of hiring. That's definitely a challenge for us, is having positions available when we're there. I mean, if we, there, when we go to these recruitment fairs, there are some, like at the UIC Consortium, there were people there from Ohio, from California. There were ones from California, they're, I mean, desperate in California and in Las Vegas, where they're giving like on-the-spot contracts, signing bonuses of $15,000, starting pay of $79,000. And they're, I mean, they're there, they, they're just, they're ready with contracts. So you compete with some of that. Fortunately, a lot of people aren't planning on moving their whole life to there. But I think that's something, we've had a lot of conversations, it'd be nice if we could go there and be ready to hire. Some of that might be taking risk and gamble at times, not knowing what positions we're going to have, but feeling like we're going to have some positions. Because that, these recruitment fairs all take place around, you know, anywhere from February through typically March. One of the HBCUs that has a lot of people attend is in April, but, you know, around that time. And that's kind of early in our hiring season, though I wish it wasn't, but it's really hard to get out there earlier. And like this year, we had so many late resignations, and that really hurts. And a lot of that, like I said, is I, school districts are not being so nice to each other. And we're struggling with that.
Is there any barriers for teaching in Illinois, like bringing someone from out of state here? Because I thought there used to be something, but they are working on improving that.
They used to be okay with the provisionals. And then they completely restricted it. I think that was, coming from the university level, I think they were like, we need people in Illinois going to school. So they kind of made it more difficult to go from out of state. But we're hurting so bad that they've kind of loosened that up again on granting provisional certificates. And so they've made that a little bit easier again, very similar to like what it used to be.
Yeah, July 1st, they offered full reciprocity to any state. So anyone with a degree, a certificate outside of Illinois can come in and get a professional educator license on the spot.
So they, the last four, five years has been kind of a roller coaster ride with that. They, it was okay, then it got extremely, almost impossible to get people from out of state. Now they've completely went the other direction with it. I think some long-term things that we also have to be thinking about is just, we have to make sure we're looking at our process and our timeline for hiring. I think those are both things that make it challenging. I've, I had plenty of conversations with people about possible, you know, good candidates and good candidates of color, and not having positions available, and then a month later having positions available, and no longer are the candidates available. And I'm sure that happens in workforces everywhere. It just seems, you know, we see that a lot. It's a very, very competitive market. And so those are some things that we struggle. We want to make sure that there's nothing in our hiring process that would be limiting us, you know, even outside of the timing for hiring. We also have to be making sure that we're focusing on, how do we keep our staff members? What do we do so that people like to work here, wanna be part of our school district, feel comfortable being part of our school district, feel like they have other people that they connect with? Just like we say about kids and how important it is to build relationships, we're hoping that our teachers feel like they're building those relationships with their colleagues and with their administrators and other members of the community. And then we're looking at the grow your own. We really, you know, we keep complaining, or at least I do, I apologize, instead of saying we, I keep complaining about the teacher shortages. And it's easy to complain about it and not try to do anything about it. So we are taking this year where we want to meet out, meet with educators at the high schools who work with Educators Rising, or our Student Education Associations, or our teachers who teach Intro to Education, as well as, I believe it's Education 2. I'm trying to set up meetings with them to talk about, what do we need to do to really enhance the number of students who want to be teachers when they leave here? Other school districts, whenever they, they kind of guarantee to their students that they'll get an interview. get an interview. In our district, if they go into education, you know, leaving from here, but I want to know, what else can we do? I know sometimes, there was just recently a report that came out that showed that support for teachers is at a very high right now across the nation, where people feel, you know, they're supportive of their teachers and supportive of, you know, wanting the teachers to have a more comfortable living, I should say, it talked about in this report. But at the same time, it's at one of the lowest points of where people, if they want their own kid to go into education. And so what do we do about that? How do we get people to want to go into education? We're facing and battling many things in trying to get people to do that. Right now, sometimes if our teachers or counselors encourage a student to go into education, sometimes they do get a little bit of pushback, not, from people not wanting their children to go into education, for all different reasons, some I wasn't thinking of before. And so those are some things we face, but we have to take a look at, what can we do to try and build the workforce from within our own community?
We talk about retention. We understand that there are a number of reasons that staff decide to pursue employment elsewhere, but we also know that establishing a solid relationship at the time of hire improves retention, therefore reducing the costs for recruitment and hiring. We know that communication, training and resources, and introductions to our culture are foundations of the onboarding process. And the onboarding team of administrators, teachers, and CEC department representatives did an incredible job this summer collaborating on what our onboarding process looks like, and continue to provide that support on a weekly basis with our new teaching assistants. So I just want to say thank you to all that were involved in that. While turnover was up, we account much of this to our large retirement class. Of the 215.4 FTE that left, 93.7 FTE retired and 121.7 resigned. So 5.2 percent of our teaching staff exited, and when you compare that to the 13.7 percent average across Illinois, and 9 to 13 percent of our comparable districts, based on data that we pulled from the Illinois State Report Card, that's very low. Both major groups, teachers and support staff, saw jumps in retirement. What's important to note about the data that's on the board now is that 34 percent of those that resigned left for other teaching positions, which is down from last year. We feel that a strong contract, our ongoing professional learning opportunities, and supportive and collaborative relationships are solid foundations for our retention. We acknowledge that participation in our exit survey was disappointing. The data we collected, though, was insightful and will help us understand what we can do better. The respondents were primarily teachers, and they were spread evenly throughout the different levels. There were three top reasons that staff indicated were factors in leaving the district, and included workload conditions, lack of support, and salary, two of which were less of an influence than last year, so not as influential in their decision to leave. Most important is that 47.8 percent of the respondents left for relocation, and that was relocation outside Illinois. They were moving outside the state. We're pleased that 95.2 percent would recommend IPSD 204 as a place to work. In accordance with our board goals, we retained over 98 percent of teachers rated excellent. We continue to retain our excellent teachers, and of those that left, one was for an administrative position, 11 left for other teaching positions, seven moved, and seven left for family medical or other reasons. We're very proud of the service that our staff, the service of our staff, and recognized 452 individuals this year. We formally recognized teaching service for 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service during our Institute Day, and that represented 2,840 years of teaching to the district.
Sam, with that, we can answer any questions.
Questions?
So what, we're down 650 students this year? So being up 30, almost 32 headcount from last year at the beginning of the year is a positive move, although we'd all like more, that it's something to keep noting to people. Yeah.
I got a couple of comments. Got a couple of comments. So did you say, what was the, what was the average turnover of, I guess, total staff or teachers on an average basis? Do you have any numbers on that?
In Illinois?
Yeah.
13.7 percent is the average, what they provided for last year. I think last year, when I presented, the most recent information I found at that time was around 15 percent, but last year's was 13.7 from the state report card.
That's combined retirement and resigning, or?
Total turnover.
Okay, so really, it doesn't differentiate. Because, because I actually, two weeks ago, I saw an article in the paper, and then we just happened to have this discussion about a high school district that was bragging about their retention rates. And this is the fifth-highest-paying high school district in the state. Now, mind you, we've got 10 times as more staff as this particular district does. But I found it interesting, because they were, they were all excited about a 96 percent retention rate. So I crunched our numbers, and I looked at our teachers. Well, our total staff that we lost due to resignation, right? This wasn't retirement, this is resignation where they left. We've got, we only lost 3.5 percent staff. But if you just look at our teachers, we only lost 2 percent of our staff. Now, don't misunderstand me, I think it's extremely important, we always find out why we're losing staff, we pay close attention to that. But I'm not, I'm starting to wonder if we maybe should be flipping the script and saying, you know what, from last year to this year, we retained 98 percent of our teachers out of 2,000 teachers. That's pretty awesome, you know? And then I, then I wonder if, you know, we should be surveying our current staff and saying, why are you staying here? What is great about Indian Prairie School District? Because I think when we start talking positively about the staff we're retaining and why people like to be here, I'm thinking it could have a great effect. Now, don't get me wrong, I still think it's important we focus on the diversity and getting more diverse teachers. I would like us to also look at absenteeism of our teachers, because that has a significant effect on our students. But when teachers are absent, meaning they take sick leave. But I think maybe we should start talking about how great we're doing. And I know we do, don't get me wrong, but, you know, I know we always kind of focus on the, why are we losing? And maybe we should start saying, hey, we're reaching 98 percent. That high-paying high school district could only retain 96 percent, and we're doing better than them. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're fortunate that we have outstanding staff in our district across the board. You know, we, I think we do try to listen when we can, and we try to, we want to retain great teachers.
Absolutely.
And we want to listen, I should say, we want to retain great staff across the board. So we do try to meet with our leadership for our teachers, with our support staff, and try to get a gauge for how people are doing, because we want people to want to stay here. Our curriculum department does some outstanding things where teachers get to learn from other teachers, and I think they like that they get that opportunity in this district. I think at this time, it being about recruitment and hiring is probably why we've turned our focus to, this is the amount that left, and what we're trying to do to fill those. I think at the same time, we're realizing that, you know, there's some teacher shortage crises that I think are really, we weren't necessarily feeling it as much, and you're starting to feel it a lot more. I think DuPage is probably, in Illinois, one of the, you know, last groupings to really start feeling it, but we're starting to feel it as well, and so.
And I guess what I'm saying is, if I'm a kid coming out of college, and Doug, you walk up to me and say, hey, at our district, we're retaining 98 percent of our staff, we'd love to have you come in and interview. I mean, to me, I'm going, wow, they're retaining 98 percent of their staff last year? That's awesome. You know, I mean, so I'm just saying that, sorry.
Yes, highlight the good.
Yeah.
Susan?
Just comment, then a couple of quick questions. Thanks for being so focused on trying to ensure that we're reaching out for teachers at a variety of different arenas, and being very strategic and just kind of thinking outside of the box. There was a, there was a comment, flexibility to hire best candidate for their needs. There was a, can you, can you explain? Because I, I know we always want to hire the best candidate.
Sure. You know, there's a lot of school districts that will only grant teachers five years of experience. You know, I, there's a lot of school districts. So some, a teacher who has 10 years of experience, if they went to that district, they would only give them five years of experience. We have flexibility in our contract where we give teachers, you know, their full experience, which helps us, that's why you see with our numbers where we get teachers who are seven to nine years or 10-plus years, we have some of that flexibility. Now, there are positions across the district where there's a lot more people licensed for those positions. And so we do think about that when, I mean, we are limited as a school district on how much money we have to get teachers, and so, you know, we know that the more experience that a teacher has, the more expensive it's going to be. But we know there are certain positions where, especially some of those hard to fill, we have some special education, self-contained special education, as well as some psychologists, where they might be coming here and starting at $80,000, because they might have 20 years of experience, and masters plus, you know, a lot of education experience. And so we, that's what we mean by flexibility. Hopefully, that makes sense.
I just was kind of looking at the, Illinois as a whole is really struggling, and as across the country, but I think every time we have a chance to speak to our legislators, we need to let them know that they're digging away at some of the benefits that our teachers have been used to receiving. I think that's having an effect, also along with a lot of the other things that are going on. But every time they dig away at it, I think we're, we start to fight another issue.
Last comment. I agree with Kathy. I actually, Mark, I agree with you there.
How about that?
Yeah, I think it's important that we do stress the positive in what we're doing.
I also think, many of us ask questions about the survey and the 23 people. And you came back to us, and I just want to make this public with a commitment to really look at that. And I think that's important, too. Whoever leaves our district, I think it's important, if somebody is dissatisfied, that we know what that is, and try to drill that down, and do the best we can to provide the best culture that we can. You know, salary is going to drive most people's decisions, but the second thing is going to be culture and positive culture. So, Mark, I agree, we need to continue to develop a positive culture in this district, which we clearly have had for a period of time, and we need to maintain that. But when we have people who are a little bit dissatisfied, we need to listen to them, and we need to see what we can do to make this the best district we can for our kids. So I appreciate your commitment to really work on that survey, and to get more people to participate so that we can do the best for our kids.
Yeah, we're gonna work with some tech experts on that. It being an anonymous survey has made it a little bit of a challenge to even send something out as a reminder to those who did not complete it. And so there's things we need to work on with some tech experts in that arena as well.
Mike, I did have one other.
Sure.
You know, talking about culture, and as we begin to look at retention as well as attraction, so when we look at diverse groups of people coming in, and we've just had some conversations, and you mentioned it, how do we ensure that people feel good and feel comfortable within the district? And the more that we can do initiatives to help the current teachers or current staff feel good about being here, linking them with others, or.
More networking opportunities.
Exactly, it'll be something that we can share as you go out for recruitment, to let people know, this is why, you know, we're seeing people from different cultures really like being in our district, because there are linkages, networking opportunities. So that would be something that would be really positive.
That is one of the drivers we have as well, when we're looking at, we've, we've got a lot of things we're trying to work on to really focus on retention, and how do we keep people and have them feel comfortable of being part of our district, and a desire to be a part of our district.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now go to the board update portion of our agenda. I know in our packets, we've received our IASB, Illinois Association of School Board Resolutions. Mark, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, kind of same before, same routine. On here, there are four new resolutions, and then remember, at the very end, they put adopt or do not adopt, so you just have to see if you agree with the resolution committee's position statement or position on it. So if you could look at those, four new resolutions, and then there's four reaffirming of existing position statements, of which we have two, so hopefully you'll support our two. But Karen has us down to have this discussion at our October 22nd board meeting, so if possible, if you could just write down somewhere on this, that if you have any questions before we have a discussion as a board, to get those to me by October 12th, that's a Friday, that way it gives me a week to look into it, or to contact Terry over at 203, who's the representative in DuPage for the resolution committee. If you give me those questions by the 12th, and then we'll have a conversation on the 22nd. If more questions come out of that, I can also follow up again. And then on November 12th, we will vote as a board of where we stand when we go to the conference to vote. So everybody got that? I'll send an email out, too.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also know that we might have an equity update.
Yeah, so Susan and I had a chance to confer, and we're developing a process so that before we go out to the community, we as a board have some, we have something to bring to the board, so that the board can agree on the process. Initially, we're gonna start kind of at the back end, and work on trying to define a policy, so to speak, but not, you know, start with kind of, what's the definitions? Maybe these are some, you know, options for definitions, so that we have some kind of framework to guide the discussion. And then bring that back to the board, have a discussion on some of those parameters and options on the policy, and then talk more about the process. And overall, the process is, we want to reach out to different groups to get their input, and so it's not just a solely board-adopted policy, where this is what it's gonna be. We want it to be something that is going to live longer than the members that are on this board, and in order to do that, we need to get feedback from a lot of different people. But instead, we want to have the parameters so that it doesn't end up all over the place. So we use words like equity, but what does that mean in the education context? We're working on it.
Anything?
I agree with what Justin said.
Okay, as people have noticed, we have an open chair. We had a ceremony honoring a person who had left us. As a member, as a, well, we have, we had 32 people apply for the board vacancy. The board is. The board is currently working through the process of trying to determine out of these brilliant-
Yeah, incredible.
Incredible people, a process for interviewing and for trying to determine who will be the best person to serve through that. So 32 people have applied for the board vacancy. The board is in the process of working through that and to see who we will interview and finally select. So I thought people would be interested in that. Also, NSBA, which is the National School Board Association, is having their conference in Philadelphia from March 29th to April 1st. If board members are interested in attending, we need to know that because we need to come to, in, in front of the full board in order to approve that. So if you're interested, please contact me.
It is during spring break, just mentioned.
Okay, it is during spring break. I also want you to know that the NSBA conference will be in Chicago next year. So that might help you in determining whether you want to go this year or next year, but the conference will be in Chicago next year. I also want to congratulate my fellow board members for the Board Governance Award. It's an honor serving with you. You guys, as Lori, are great stewards and highly professional. And I'm glad that IASB recognized you as being a highly functioning board. Lend, their first legislative meeting for DuPage County is on Friday, and we will have someone represent us on Friday at the Lend meeting. You also might want to look in your packet, I think the Illinois Association of School Boards might have tweaked the requirements for master board member. I'm uncertain, but we, they have new requirements there, so you might want to look through that to make sure that we're still all on task in terms of maintaining our board status.
You have fewer options for earning points than you had previously.
Okay.
So some of the things that used to count as points towards that designation won't be available for that. So that's the reason I wanted you to be able to see exactly what they are counting.
National School Board Conference.
National School Board Conference is absolutely one of those that was very helpful in earning those points and that is gone.
Okay.
They also will tabulate themselves through what you register for, but if there's anything, you know, if you see anything, I can help you contact them to make sure that they're accounting for everything appropriately.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, I need a motion to reconvene into closed session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I, maybe we need to take a roll call. So Jack, can you take a roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now recess into executive session.